Commissioner Oilers, time to leave the Pledge Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless our family together today as we make decisions that benefit Garden City and the people who live here. Thank you for the linemen who work diligently to keep the power running and for the first responders who keep us safe. Father, we are grateful for all the blessings you give us. Fill us with grace as we pray in your name. Amen.
All right. First thing is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes that we need to make to the minutes?
No.
All right. If not, they'll stand as approved. Public comment. This is now public comment time. We have 30 minutes allocated to this, five minutes per spokesperson. This is time for anybody who is not dealing with something that's already on the agenda to come up and say what you'd like. If you do come up, please say your name and we'll go from there. Is there anybody in the public? Go ahead, Nathan.
I'm Pastor Nathan Heck, after any point church in Ezrein. I just want to say thank you Commissioners and Mayor for your support of our Community Cultural Day that's coming up. We invite you guys to come out. All of you are welcome on that day, that May 21st. We'll start at 10:00 a.m. and invite you guys to be a part of that celebration. Was very excited to see things coming together and we have 12 countries committed to being there so far this year and others have expressed interest, but because of scheduling and things, we'll see next year it grow exponentially, we're hoping. And so, very excited about that. Also, very excited the way the community is able to come together in other areas as well. I'd finished the Leadership Garden City class. I know several of you have done that. And so, very excited and learning a little bit more about leadership and the different things that we're doing. So, I encourage everyone out there to take that if they have not done so. And just to celebrate togetherness, I was thinking about how unique our community is and we've been able to come together. As a matter of fact, on Easter Sunday, our church, we celebrated seven different country representatives in our congregation Sunday morning. And what a joy that is to see our community coming together more and more. And so, just want to say thank you for that support. Invite you all to be a part of that day. And just thank you for the support you have for each other in this community. And we see things happening, great things happening. I just want to celebrate good things instead of coming here with a complaint or anything like that. We want to celebrate the good things that God's doing here in this community. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. We'll move on.
Mayor Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Silver Sage Renaissance Festival to allow, under section 635 and 6133, the possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages or alcoholic liquors on the sidewalks, streets, and public areas, specifically Fennepin Park, on June 18th through 19th of 2022.
Is there any discussion about this? And I believe we all got a letter on the bench here from them.
Are they going to have a way to mark who's 21 and over or are these?
There is, there's state requirements. That's not locally administered, but I, the relationship they have to have with, not AT, ABC, alcohol beverage control with the state of Kansas requires, I believe, a perimeter and an age control mechanism and that those are staffed at all times.
And then we did it, we've done beer gardens before, but on that, is this like a beer garden? That's what I wasn't unsure of, so I...
The additional requests or remarks says, says that there's a beer garden. But I believe the waiver would allow them to have alcoholic liquors as well.
May I? Jackie was unable to be in attendance today. She, that is the letter that you guys have on your, on the bench. They do plan to have two different vendors that will sell alcoholic beverages. And each one of those businesses has their own liquor license from the state, Hidden Trail Brewery and a winery, I believe. And that's common for them to be at vendor events and such. Basically, today is just the permission to have the consumption possession and on the premises. But they would be, they, just as Matt stated, they would, and Jennifer, that they have to have that barrier. And I would assume they would do wristbands as well.
So, there's no regulations on the size of that beer garden, I guess?
Just has to be a fenced off area.
Correct.
I'll make the motion that we approve the request as presented.
Second.
All right. There is a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and proclaim April 23rd, 2022 as Lee Richardson Zoo Day in Garden City, Kansas. Kristi.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. 95 years ago, local members of the Isaac Walton League put into action an idea that has evolved into what we now know as Lee Richardson Zoo. What started with two skunks and a focus on local species now provides our guests with, guests with a glimpse into the diversity of the world's wildlife. Through the dedicated efforts over the years of the staff and the continued support of the city and the community, the zoo has grown its impact while providing quality care and welfare for the residents and engaging in conservation efforts. The zoo is proud to contribute to the conservation awareness of those we reach, as well as providing a welcoming environment for all to enjoy. This Saturday, we're welcome, we're recognizing our 95th anniversary along with Earth Day with a variety of activities at the zoo between 9:00 and 2:00, and ask that you proclaim Saturday, April 23rd, as Lee Richardson Zoo Day.
All right.
I move that we approve the proclamation.
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
I was just going to say the zoo looks the best at 95 I've ever seen. It's really, your staff and you have done a outstanding job. It's gorgeous.
That passes. I'll go and read the proclamation. All right. Whereas Lee Richardson Zoo was founded 95 years ago and continues to contribute to the quality of life for those within the community and is a source of pride for Garden City and the region. And whereas the founding of the zoo was focused on conservation and to this day, the zoo engages in conservation as a key component of its mission, achieved through encouraging conservation awareness and contributing to the care and preservation of threatened and endangered populations and wild habitats through the efforts of the zoo and around the world. And whereas Lee Richardson Zoo has evolved over the years to maintain the high standards necessary to provide top quality care and welfare for the resident animals and to offer safe, welcoming environment for all ages of guests, thanks to the dedicated staff and zoo supporters. And whereas the zoo provides some of the most unique educational experiences to local students as well as those around the world through distance learning presentations, offering insight to our national treasures. And whereas Lee Richardson Zoo has spent 95 years connecting people with wildlife inspiring appreciation and understanding of the natural world through conservation, education, and engaging experiences. Now, therefore, I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim April 23rd, 2022, as Lee Richardson Zoo Day in the City of Garden City and encourage all residents to visit the zoo and express their appreciation to the staff and the numerous zoo supporters in the community for this exceptional asset. Sign and seal this 19th day of April, 2022. You want to? We, we should. I feel like we should.
It's not like it's on the truth. Item 6C, the governing body, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th, 2022 as Drinking Water Week in Garden City, Kansas. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Some years I don't come up to speak for this and this year I do. So, good to see everyone. The first week of May every year, we celebrate Drinking Water Week, just basically to bring additional information to our customers about our source of water for the community and, and also what's involved to provide it. And then also recognize our employees who provide that to our customers. So, that's all I have on that. If you have any questions, I'm available.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
If there's a motion and a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. I'll go ahead and read this. It says, whereas waters are a most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens do enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuing, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of the pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas a coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of our city are all called upon here to protect the source of waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now, therefore, I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Garden City, and call upon the citizens to seek information about water supply and its role in this community, sign this 19th day of April, 2022. I'll make Fred.
Take a picture too.
We're doing the proclamation, you two might as well do the pictures as well.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you're probably aware, this is our 44th year to be a Tree City USA, which is an exciting consecutive year achievement. Part of that is we do an Arbor Day poster contest every year and for the fifth graders in our school district. This year, we did have a local winner and that was from Charles Stones. Arbor Day is on April 29th and we would like to proclaim that day Arbor Day. There is a tree planting ceremony on April 28th at 3:15 at Charles Stones, because what we do for the winner is plant a tree. So, I would invite everybody here to that. And I believe that's the day we'll read the proclamation as well if approved.
Correct.
Do you know the contestant winner's name?
I don't. I'll get that for you though.
Okay.
You said on April 28th?
April 28th, yes. The, the actual day before Arbor Day, based on some scheduling.
All right.
I move to proclaim April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day.
I'll second.
All right. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. And like Aaron said, I'll be reading this at the Arbor Day Celebration at Charles Stones. So, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, we'd like to add a, a fifth item. So, it'd be item 6E, another proclamation. We would like to recognize an employee who is planning on retiring. Cliff Sonnenberg has served the City of Garden City for 43 years. And so, to tell us more about maybe some events planned today and to kind of set the table for your proclamation, I'll have Mike come up and say a few words.
Good, excuse me. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, as Matt mentioned, Cliff Sonnenberg, the Superintendent of the Electric Department, has served the city for 43 years. The longest tenured person that I'm aware of in the Electric Department. Cliff has been instrumental in everything. I can just think about it. Forty years ago is a long time. And there are many, many times Cliff was out there working at night and all the time trying to keep the lights on and keeping people safe. And Cliff, he couldn't be here today, but we're going to move forward. We're going to have a reception for him at the Utility Service Center on Friday at noon, kind of a little barbecue-type thing. Certainly, all of you are invited, or anybody that worked with Cliff over the years is invited to attend that. And anyway, I kind of lead you into the resolution that we've asked for you to consider, Commissioners. And then I know that Cliff's mother and his sister is here today to hopefully, if you pass the resolution, they'll be able to take a picture with them. And it's great that they could be here to represent Cliff. So, there you go, Mayor.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. And I will go ahead and read this proclamation. It says, whereas Cliff Sonnenberg began work for the City of Garden City as groundsman's apprentice, apprentice linesman in September 5th, 1978. And whereas Cliff's career saw him advance to the positions of journeyman, lineman, and electric superintendent, which he has held since March 21st, 1999. And whereas Cliff was active in the development and safety of electric linemen through his leadership and role with the Underground and Overhead Maintenance School and the development of the state-accredited lineman apprentice program. And whereas Cliff served on several occasions as a city's representative to Kansas Municipal Utilities and Kansas Municipal Energy Agency as chairman of the EMP 2 Committee. And whereas Cliff was a valued member of the City of Garden City and honorably continued his, a noble family legacy of public service. And whereas during Lineman Appreciation Week, the city recognizes and celebrates the 43-year career of the longest-tenured member of the City Line Crew. And whereas Cliff will long be remembered as one of the linemen who put his service of keeping the lights on in Garden City above many family and holiday events. Now, therefore, I, Shannon and Dick, Mayor of Garden City of Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2022, as Cliff Sonnenberg Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to the community, and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out the responsibilities and duties for the City of Garden City. Sign and seal this 19th day of April, 2022.
This is all my fault because I called him. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Item 7A, the building a stronger economy or base grant application that the Commission had approved submitting at a previous meeting was not approved by the Kansas Department of Commerce. And Mike, I don't think you necessarily need to present this. I'll go through it there. We had requested $7.3 million for water system improvements, 16-inch water main currently under construction, a booster pump station also under construction, plus water tower that is ready to be bid, and design inspection and permit costs that the water budget would be required to pay. And so, of the 100 million in applications, or 100 million available to be distributed statewide, there were 440 applications and those totaled $1.8 billion in requests. We'll begin investigating the use of general obligation or revenue bonds to pay for these required improvements largely related to industrial expansions that are planned and underway or on the horizon. So, we included the letter from the Department of Commerce and then also included a list of things that were funded. We were also provided a kind of a geographic representation from the Department of Commerce, the darker the blue, the more money that was awarded. And those are the counties that were, that received funding in Kansas. So, about, you divide the state into thirds, about $64.5 million went to, went to the eastern third of the state out of the 100 million. 34 million of the 100 million went to the central Kansas third. And a little less than 400,000, or less than half a percent of the base grants went to the western third of the state.
Matt, was it an all or nothing grant application either they funded it all or they, they didn't, couldn't fund part of it, or they just did all?
Well, we got nothing. So, I know that much. The, I do not know enough about the other applications to know whether or not there were any partial funded applications.
Again, just shocking to see, especially when I brought this, this graphic up, just to see the distortion. And I know it was brought up during the legislative coffee about the funding and, you know, our state representatives, you know, talked about how, you know, the population and everything, but still, it's interesting to see how it's distributed across the entire state of Kansas or not.
At least for two-thirds.
Yeah, the .4M kind of gives it a better, a little better. It should be like 400K.
Right, right.
Yeah. Well, and then, kind of the explanation of what the representatives received doesn't correlate with the grant itself. So, I, I don't know. I kind of, I was talking to somebody about it this morning and I said, we should probably overlay the K-dot, grant funding, and see how that looks. I mean, because we were talking about that, you know, where the eastern part and how the numbers kind of correlate. But it's just, it's just interesting.
There's a lot of maps that we could overlay that have similar distributions?
Right.
So, we'll get, we'll move along with that. You'll see reports from our staff, several of them in there. Do you have any questions on those or comments?
No, I enjoyed the social media report. I was just looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
Lots of activities coming up on Meetings of Note. Those require RSVPs. Please do those through CLN. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2553-2022A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2553-2022A.
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do you have any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is, is asked to consider and approve a resolution adopting and allocating matching funds for an outdoor fitness court grant awarded from National Fitness Campaign in the amount of $85,000. If approved, it would be resolution number 2906-2022.
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners again. With the development of Southeast Park, one of the things that we want to try to do is extend those dollars by, through grant applications, which we have done here. And one of those requirements for, to receive those grant funds is to pass a resolution. Our portion of that, to build the fitness court itself is, would be about $60,000 to put the concrete pad down and some of the infrastructure around and purchase, you know, there's a partial purchase in there for the equipment. They provide $50,000 match. There's an additional $25,000 in there because you can actually customize your fitness court with public art. And so, there is an additional fee for them to develop that and put that coating on, because it's a graffiti proofed coating that covers the art and goes around in the facility. And I did put an example in the supporting documentation of what that could look like. But obviously, that's something that the Commission has expressed interest in and set goals towards. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were upfront and included that right away. Again, this is, will be funded out of that project. There is money left in the 2020 GEO bond to fund this portion. And I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution 2906-2022.
Second.
All right. Then there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item 12A, Beverly Schmitz Glass, PhD, Fannie County Humane Society Representative will be present to give an update on activities. Bev?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's been a while. So, I have been with the Fannie County Humane Society since January as their marketing and grants person. So, I asked when was the last time that we, you received an update and they said, oh, yeah. And so, I'm here to give, to give an update of what's going on with us. I wanted to start out first by talking about the difference between an animal shelter and a humane society. And an animal shelter basically takes in, you know, strays or whatever, and either the owner can come and get them within a period of time, or then they're usually euthanized. A humane society comes in, takes them in, cleans them up, vaccinates them, gets them ready for adoption within a three-business-day period. Or if they're microchipped, then they can get, can get ahold of the owners and say, we have your animal, please come. And, and so, and then we're also obligated to much more medications and, and protocols to get that animal healthy and ready for adoption or to be transferred to another rescue, a no-kill or low-kill rescue. For us, that's usually going, taking the animals to Denver or to a couple places in New Mexico. We're United States-wide, but primarily that's what we, the places we go, just because there's a broader population for adoption and, and we have scored a lot of success. I also want to brag on the fact that whenever there's a, particularly, it seems to be Louisiana, because they always have the hurricanes, is that when they find animals, is that Garden City is one of the first places that they call and see if they can ship animals to us because of our reputation of having, taking care of the animals and having them get ready for adoption. And the level of care is well above average. We have every reason to feel proud about that. Also, when in this, with the humane societies, we offer the ability to take adopted pet parents and run them through, this is, you know, what to expect, and this is what you need to look for, and that sort of thing. We give them printed materials and then we help them introduce the new pet to family members or other established... members or other established pets to see if that adoption's going to work out. So it's really just kind of another level of care, and we also provide foster care. We get, sometimes get animals in that need a little extra quiet time and, wouldn't work at my house, but we have quiet time to get, you know, back on their feet and get medication and get, because we treat everything from parvo to ringworm and everything like that. So we have a great foster system, people who are more than willing to take these animals into their care, glad about that. One of the startling statistics that I want to talk about, because I was amazed about this, in 2021, we had 3,024 animals cross our threshold. That is a lot of animals in 12-month period of time. Our average daily census runs between 135 and 150 animals every day, all day, 365. So, and it's not like they come in, is that they have to be examined, they have to determine if they need treated for parvo or ringworm or whatever. If they aren't microchipped, they get that, and so, and then they get cleaned up and get as close as we can to get them ready for, for adoption, or their owner will retrieve them. And of that number, 683 were returned to their owners, always a good number, 84 were returned to the field. And, and then we also do transfer, as, transport out of state. We usually do that on a Friday. It's, and like I said, we have to get them ready, we have volunteer drivers, and then the humane society picks up the tab for the, for the food, for the drivers, and, and for the gas for the vans, and maintains the vans too. So like I said, they, when they come in, they get a rabies shot, they get treated for fleas and, and are dewormed. It's lovely. If they go to transport, before they do that, they have to have all that, they have to be fully vetted, and they also have to have all their shots, and must be spayed and neutered before any other rescues will take them. So they come pretty much ready to go. We have several programs that help us get on top of the overpopulation of our animals. One is barn cats. It is amazing to me how many people from all over southwest Kansas will call and say, I need mousers. And so we have the strays that are brought in, and that's strictly what they do, they get, you know, they get vetted, and then they also get their ear clipped to let people know that they have been, you know, that they've been spayed or neutered. And then we said, okay, how many would you like? And said, how many do you have? And so, so we have an ongoing program with barn cats, and very popular program. We also have what they call a TNR, which is a trap, neutered, or spayed and release. And this is from people who have stray cats around, and they feed them, but they're not really the cuddly, woody types, they're just stray. So we bring those in, trap them, bring them in, they get spayed or neutered, and then they're released back into what we call out into the field. And this is all if we have room. Sometimes we have to tell our animal controls, say, no more trapping because we're full. And we're coming into the kitten season, and that usually runs from May to August, September, and then we get mama cats and kittens and kittens and more kittens. So that, that TNR program really makes a difference. And like I said, we have the transport program, which we take it to rescues, and we do some a lot to Wichita too, just because of the condition that we bring the animals in. And Fannie County, the humane society picks up that tab too. Of course, adoption. And it's our goal is to find as many homes as we can, and sometime we try to start locally and get the word out. On our website, there are adoption that are available, and you can go through, and you can click on all the pictures, and we'll give them what kind of dog or cat they are, if they're good with kids, if they need to be the only, only animal in the house, that sort of thing, so you know before you go in what kind of animal you're getting. There's an adoption process, you have to fill out a form, make application, and you have to provide references. So no one can just walk in and say, yeah, I'll take all the pit bulls and away we go. Is that they, and so they're, so they're vetted as long, as well as the animals, two different, two different kinds of vetting, but you understand. And then we have spray and neuter and vaccine clinics, we usually try to run these three times a year. We could probably run one every, every other month and still be full. And there's just that, that demand for it. And then we do, like I said, microchip identification, that's kind of a new thing, is that this way, when somebody brings in a, an animal, we can, and if they've been microchipped, either we know that they're a part of the barn program or the TNR, or they belong to someone, and gives us a better idea to get the animal back to where they belong. And in all this process, then we offer people to get their city tags. As you probably know, is that if there's a cat or dog that are four months or older, they are required by the city to have annually, to be registered annually and get their tags. And they go through the process of getting spayed and neutered and everything. At our place, we help them with the tags there so they don't have to make an extra trip to the city. Just kind of a, an additional thing. We also offer cremation. We offer private services for people who have lost a beloved animal, can bring them and be individually cremated and with remains in a purple or gray velvet sack, or you can buy a silver or bronze urns for an additional fee. Also, we do a lot of that too. And then we also do education programs, and we usually go into the elementary schools in our school district and talk to them about the responsibility of an animal and, and, you know, and not having additional litters and that sort of thing. And, and we do that by demonstration. So of course, we bring animals for them to pet, and, and we have a little bit of everything right now. Not only do we have dogs and cats, we have bunnies, we have a couple Guinea pigs. A guy, a gentleman passed a couple, a couple of weeks ago, and we had 10 parakeets, and we usually have some snakes, there were now a python. We've had horses, we have ducks, chickens, geese. It's kind of like your average, you know, menagerie of animals, so come down and take a look, see. I want, I want, this is kind of what I, we do tours, we have people come down, and one of the things that Mrs. Lamb from the Community College brought down basketball players. These are usually from the east coast, and to just, they'd never heard of an animal shelter. So they brought down these basketball players, and they spent time down the shelter, took a tour, walked the dogs, played with the cats, and so, and from that, they've had a couple more players that have come down on their own just to walk the dogs, play with the cats, and, and just help out. So it's kind of a real, it's kind of a neat sharing of the experience of animals. We're proud of our community partnership, not only with the city and the county, but with the Girl Scouts and real men, real leaders who have been so helpful during our fundraising events. Very impressed with that. Both of those groups know how to work, well-supervised, very polite, and, and really kind of makes you feel hopeful for the coming generations of what they're able to do. And we also have a working relationship with Mosaic. And what they do is they come down and they wash all the water bowls and the feed bowls and that sort of thing, and help with the laundry. As you can imagine, with 135 to 150 pets, the towels, the blankets and everything need to be washed, and, and they help with that, but they're really primarily responsible for doing the dishes. And it is, it's a godsend for both of us, for both organizations. You probably know about the outdoor expansion. So this project, because y'all helped with it, helped big with it. This outdoor expansion, which in about two weeks, we'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for that, and this is a godsend in a lot of ways. There are nine eight-by-eight covered kennels, there are 39 five-by-eight kennels, there are three covered caddios, which are places for the cats to hang out on shelves and soak up rays. And then we have 11 play areas and an isolation area for dogs, which we had not had before. We have an isolation area for cats in the garage, but no place for dogs who have been set aside because they have bitten or have other issues, behavioral issues. And we have two adoption areas. And so in addition to this, they have, we have had water hydrants that have been put in and around everything, and we have this, this incredible waste treatment plant that even Mike would be proud of because it is that good. And so, as far as we know, there's no one else in the state that has anything like this. So, you know, you, you pick up the, the waste, and you flip open this little top, and it goes down this chute, and you put water down it, and it flushes away, and away we go. So the outside kennels stay clean. And one of the things, and it's good to have those animals to take away the stress, the kennel stress. So we're able now, instead of doing one, one kennel at a time inside, we're able to move entire sections of dogs outside and cats outside, so the staff can clean an entire section of kennels. They get two hours out in the sun, they get to play with the toys, and just generally, you know, it helps their disposition. And then we're able to do the clean, because as you can imagine, it's cleaning, cleaning, cleaning all the time. So that's the waste outside's taken care of, the waste inside, and everything's bleached down, and then we can keep doing social, fun stuff, and cat and dog treats and that sort of thing. Funding. The shelters largely is funded by the Sidney County, and then the humane society comes in and takes care of all the other stuff. And so they're, they're two organizations kind of under one roof. From January to March of this year, we have been awarded $58,000 in grants, so we're proud of that in a short amount of time. We're also the finalists for three additional grants in that, and they're not always about money, like one's about for microchips, one one is for rabies shots, and the other one is to take care of veterinarian bills. We last, at the end of last year, we hired a vet tech from the Colby Community College program, and she's able to come in and do a lot of assessment and treatment instead of having to load the animals up and take them to a vet, and that has one staff member now off campus handling that. Is she able to, to work through the basic things, and then if has a question, can call one of our vets, so we're able to cut down on our vet bills. Memberships are $25 for individuals, 50 for families, and 100 for businesses. Keep in mind is that one rabies shot is $25. So one individual membership pays for one rabies shot. That's the, that's the expense side of it. So that's my job, create memberships here. We also have what we call kennel keepers, and this is a sponsorship program for all the indoor and outdoor kennels. And so Kearney County Bank has stepped forward, and they have, are now sponsoring three of the large outdoor kennels. And then John Young is sponsoring one of the adoption areas. So we wanted to make it so we could be as inclusive to as many people as we can. So we have the, the outdoor adoption areas like 750, and then the caddios and the play areas are 500. Large kennels are 350, small outdoor kennels are 250. Indoor kennels are 100, and then indoor cat kennels are 50. So it kind of has a wide variety, so we can have individuals, we can have groups, we can have family who can still, this is my kennel, and has their, will have their little plate on it with their name or logo or whatever, so they can sponsor that, so this is our cat kennel right here. And we think that that way we can get more and more public involvement. Upcoming events and fundraisers. On Friday, June 24th, from 6:30 to 10:30 at Garden Rapids, is the first ever Barker Riddaville. And this is going to be cheeseburgers in paradise, a1A hot dogs, margaritas. Holland Axes is going to come down with their staff, will have cornhole contest, and the lost shaker of salt treasure hunt. So we think it'll be fun, it needs to be fun, it's all about the animals, but we need to have a good time at the same time. On Saturday and Sunday, October 29th and 30th, we're having Santa Paws. And this is an opportunity for people to bring their dogs, cats, animals down, to have their picture taken with Santa Claus, just in time for those holiday cards and gifts for people who have everything. And then on Saturday, February 18th, 2023, we are having potty crawls. And so this will be a toupee, shrimp gumbo, red beans and rice, jambalaya, cornbread, king cake, beats, masks, zydeco music, and about this much crazy. So, because you have to do that when you do potty crawls. So those are the big things that, that were for our fundraisings coming up. We have been okayed to have a telegram column, and so we can let the public know what's going on and keep in tune with their things, or they can happen, and adoption and that sort of thing. And the name of the column is going to be In and Out of the Doghouse, and so I'll be writing that. And then there are ways that, for volunteers, we always need people to walk dogs, socialize with kittens, because especially when they get ready to adopt, and we've done some socialization with kittens, they just go, humans, that they'll be able to be okay with that, and, and, and try to keep the disdain that cats are known for, like, that's the best you can do, I need to go with another family. So if we feel like we spend some time socializing with them, it works out really well. We always need dog and cat food and treats, we need old blankets, we need towels, we need toys, we need litter, newspaper, big and small shoes, paper towels, bleach, laundry detergent, and cardboard flats. Things that I know that's hanging around your house, you'd love to get rid of, we'll take them for you. That's all I have today.
Any questions for Bev?
Bev, on that T, what'd you call it, that trap and?
T.
Release?
Uh huh.
So when they, when, if, if an owner calls you to have that done, to have them spayed or neutered or whatever, does that, does that include a charge for that?
Oh yes, they're charged for that.
Okay.
Yeah. There's an adoption fee, and we really try to keep minimum, you know, we're looking at that because the reality is it doesn't really cover our costs, and we need to have that, so at least our costs are covered with the shots and medications and stuff like that. But if owner wants to come in and said, yeah, we can, and doesn't particularly want to go through a veterinarian, then we provide that, but there is a fee for that.
When they do foster care, is it a, there's a time, for a length of time, or is that just, is that varied depending on the, on the animal, or how does that work?
It's varied depending on the animal and what they need, and, and whether it's a, you know, a cat or dog. And sometimes it's, it's over the weekend, sometimes it's months, depending on trying to get them to where they're, like I said, acceptable to be adopted. And, and God love those people because that's to, and the emotional involvement, say, okay, here's a bag, so, but they love it, and then we're fortunate to have a good supply of foster parents.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve emergency purchase of services to replace the existing roof at Municipal Court and Evidence Storage Building located at 310 North 7th Street. Derek?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hello.
So during the past month, staff has identified numerous leaks that have delayed the occupancy of the evidence storage facility by the police department. So due to the investment made by the commission to renovate the evidence storage facility Municipal Court, and the possibility that these roof leaks can cause significant damage and repair, staff has determined that emergency action needs to take place to protect that investment. So emergency purchase is terminology used within the city's purchasing policy. So approval of emergency purchases would authorize staff to select a contractor quickly outside of the normal bidding processes, but still receive competitive quotes on price and timeline for response and completion. So alternatives for you, I have four of them. Approve emergency purchase of services at $198,000 by DV Douglas. Number two, approve emergency purchase of services at $169,345 by Weathercraft Roofing. Number three, do not approve emergency purchase of services to replace the roof. And number four, governing bodies ask to give guidance to staff. So staff's recommendation would be to approve number one, emergency approval of services by DV Douglas, and this is due to their timeline for completion and project start date. DV Douglas does have the materials on hand to begin immediately, so the rest of the materials will probably get here around June 1st, so you're looking at a total start date of June 1st, and that is faster than Weathercraft. And Weathercraft's an excellent contractor, however, they're not here, able to get their materials here as quickly. So the fiscal note would be the purchase of the roof replacement will come from the community trust fund, and is totaled $198,000. Future years of the police department budget will include funding to reimburse the community trust fund for the full cost of the project. The expense will be $66,000 for three years, starting with the 2023 budget. Do I have any questions?
Derek, I got just a couple of questions on just the application of it coming off. And I, this might be a question for Mark, and so when we're talking about taking off the roof, what part of that is coming off and what's staying?
So we're going to scut it down, we're going to remove the gravel roof all the way down to the membranes, and so that's staying. So if you'll look at the map, 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6 all have a 3.5-inch polyiso board, it's a foam insulation board that will stay, so that will give it an R-value of over 20. Number 2, there is a steel deck, and it has a 1.5-inch, I believe, perlite board is what? board is what's on there. So that R value will be less than 20. However, that is our vehicle's storage. So we're not, we're not going to be heating and cooling that area. So your thermal loss won't be significant.
So the rock overlay is actually in a dish, was it add later on after that polyiso first layer was applied?
Correct.
Okay. So we're just removing that second layer and then the membrane then does stay or does that membrane come off?
Yeah, it'll stay.
All right. Good. So how long does a roof, like as far as its average lifespan? Is there a, is there an average lifespan for this type of a roof?
Yeah, it's going to last you around 20, 25 years typically, probably 20 year, 20
All right.
I'll make the motion. We approve the emergency purchase services of 198,000 by DV Douglas Roofing to replace the roof with modified cap overlay.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Derek.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of one Pierce 2022 enforcer aerial truck from Conrad Fire Equipment. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In the McGrath Organization Study released on October 28th, 2011, sorry, 21, they recommend replacement of ladder two primarily due to the age and it being 28 years of age. Dreaming assessment that we had done last year during called with Conrad Fire Equipment on ladder two, they found a significant amount of repairs that were needed and noted in their assessment that a lot of the repairs needed, that the parts were obsolete to bring the truck back up to the standards. Additionally, this year, the annual aerial test performed by the American Testing Center and on February 28th, 2022, stated that the repairs were required and noted that ladder two barely passed its test. NFPA recommends replacing fire trucks over 25 years old. They also recommend that the retired apparatus should not be responding to any emergency operations. So we made a phone call to Conrad and then we talked with Conrad. We located a spec truck, which is a, a truck that's already been built and they use it and they fill gaps in their assembly line to make sure everybody stays busy. We weighed our options with ladder two, a possible refurbisher, can we still get these parts? And that was not a viable option for the Garden City Fire Department. So if Garden City opts out of the spec truck, it'll take 20 to 24 months to replace and go through the whole process of a design to build. And if we approve this by April 30th, the Garden City Fire Department will receive a $22,000 prepaid discount. If we finance through Pierce Solutions, annual payment is 160,000 for 10 years at 3.76%. If we finance through Clayton Holdings, the annual payment is 145,000 for 10 years at 2.9, at 2.92%. All pricing on these apparatus will increase April 30th by 7%, largely due to the cost of materials. And if we approve after April 30th, the annual price, annual payment will increase with Alternatives are approve the purchase through Clayton Holdings LLC for option one. And option two would be approve the purchase through Pierce Financing Solution. Or three, deny the purchase and provide guidance. Staff recommends alternative one.
So how quickly would you get this truck?
So this will be delivered in September.
Wow, that's quick.
So it's pretty quick for a fire truck.
So it'll be painted per our other trucks and you'll have, it'll, you said it was a spec truck, but will it be, will you be able to modify it to your needs then as well?
We catch it early enough, we can still pick the paint and make the Garden City touches to it and wouldn't be like any other truck. We just get the six to eight month process of design.
Sure.
So you're just basically adding stuff onto it?
That you'll need for your requirements here locally?
Yeah. Yes, we're limited on some of them, but it needs most of the specs that we want. We have a couple tweaks that we can make and, and make it Garden City, so.
So on the old truck, what happens to it, chief?
So there's a couple options we can, we've talked to them. Possibly the trade-in is not, we don't think it's a good enough option. We don't really get nothing for it. So there's some sites that we can sell it on that either for parks or for a smaller town to, to want to put the money in and do the proper refurbishing to it that doesn't make sense to us.
How old is the ladder truck number one?
Ladder truck two or one?
The, the other one, one.
The new tower?
Yeah.
That is about three years old, three and a quarter years old.
I thought it was, yeah.
And this one's stationed up to station two and service, you know, the high school, ranch house, the trails and reserves.
I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Pierce 2022 enforcer aerial truck with the financing through Clayton Holdings.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a utility equipment purchase agreement with Metalark Dairy Nutrition LLC. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, the electric division was approached by Metalark Dairy Nutrition, DFA, to help them locate and purchase a fast source transfer switch for their electric system. When the electric system was first put in, DFA specked out the switch gears that they wanted. And what that does is it allows two sources of power to be at this switch and should one fail, it automatically switches to the other. That current switch occurs in about 14 seconds and is not fast enough for them. In the electric world, there's 60 cycles in one second. And this new transfer gear will transfer that switch. You'll transfer from one source to another in as fast as four cycles. So extremely fast. Anyway, in order to get this done, we went, we worked together, we got the prices for them, we went out for bid specs, got the specifications, put together an agreement that Metalark Dairy, former, Metalark Dairy Nutritional Services would pay for this facility. Garden City Electric is going to assist to remove the old one and put in the new one. But the agreement that we're asking you to consider today, along with the purchase, would force DFA to pay for that switch after both parties sign it and we're ready to order the material. And that material was going to cost 90,515.66. Recommendations, we recommend alternative one, which is to approve that purchase agreement and the purchase from Standing Electric for that piece of equipment. Or of course, you don't have to approve it if that's your choice. The initial funding will come from the electric department's budget. And then the, when the reimbursement occurs, the finance director will put that back in that same account that we took it out of. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Kent Potter is here, manager of electrical operations. Should you have any questions with him? He's the brains of the outfit that put this together, so.
I move to approve the utility equipment purchase agreement and accept the bid from Standing Electric for 90,515.66.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the appointment of Assistant City Manager Derek Ramos as the state's representative to the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, Inc. Board of Directors. In September of 2019, the city commission appointed me as the city's representative to the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, Inc. Board of Directors. The primary purpose of the city having a representative on this not-for-profits board of directors is as a large employer who could benefit from increased childcare and early learning capacity in the community. An important secondary benefit for the city is the economic development impact such expansion and childcare availability would have in freeing up workforce already living in the community who are willing to work but unable to do so. Assistant City Manager Derek Ramos leads a team of departments that provide administrative support to the city organization, given the impact this not-for-profit could have on providing childcare and early learning opportunities for the city workforce. Staff believes ACM Ramos is an appropriate representative to the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, Inc. Board of Directors. So the alternatives would be to approve Derek to that position, approve a different city representative to that position or direct me to remain as the city's representative to that network. We recommend alternative one.
I'll make the motion to approve Assistant City Manager Derek Ramos to the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network Board of Directors.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Oh, the, the grand introduction, sorry. Item 12F, review of major issues and assumptions used in the 2023 department budgets, review of goals and strategies that were identified in the commission retreat and review of the 2022 and 2023 capital improvement program, along with proposed financing of those projects. And then this will also be the first time for reviewing some funds in the proposed 2023 budget. And we'll be taking on the funds that can be best characterized as special revenue, support and miscellaneous funds. So with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Jared Coleman.
Good afternoon, everybody. You're going to get real tired of me over the next few meetings. I thought about how I could mix it up from the past and so everything's reverse order. Mike just looked at me and told me that I have an hour, so. You've gone over this in the past? Break it up? Yeah, we'll break it up. You've been over this in the past. I will review and go through as has been done in the past. If there are any questions, feel free to stop me. But it's, the, the beginning portions are very similar to what you've, what you've seen before. The first item is the, the budget calendar. So this is for 2022. This follows very similarly to last year. There were some adjustments last year due to the new changes with the revenue neutral rate requirements. So you'll see those reflected in the timeline here. We'll begin now with this April 19th meeting and we will be reviewing budgets through the June 21st meeting. July 5th is really when we indicate that we look at the grand total, start, start reviewing of that revenue neutral rate expectation. And then we will notify the county if we plan to exceed that. And then there's the, the budget hearing and revenue rate hearing process beyond that. The next tab are the background information of the budget, the budget process. There are the assumptions listed in here as far as some of the revenues we anticipate, the costs we have for health insurance for a person, the KPNF, the CAPR, social security. I will highlight the, the fuel costs are a difficult assumption to make at this time. So we've decided to increase 20% over what 2021 actuals were and then plan to back that back off in 2023. We'll have to rebound that plan depending on what trends do, but that'll at least give us an idea for this coming year of that increased cost that we anticipate all departments will see. So as we present future department budgets, you'll see that increased fuel cost across the board. You also have the financial policies and strategies that talk about our process, how we, how we go through this entire process. And a list of our governmental funds. Last year, we added the Parks and Recreation Fund, 072. We're looking into, we've been having discussions this year about how to carry that forward, whether that stays at segregated fund or whether that's brought in the general fund. So you'll be presented with those options and concepts down the road. We have our special revenue funds, which a lot of which are what we're going to go through today. Our enterprise funds, standalone funds, the airport, the electric utilities, other utilities, golf course. And then our internal service funds, which are the health insurance and work compensation funds. The next tab in your binder are the goals which were set this year at the commission retreat. So as a reminder to look back on as we go through the budget cycle, you can reflect back on the goals that were made and the priorities that have been emphasized as we, as we were looking at where we're allocating those funds for the year. Then you have the capital improvement plan, 2022 projects and funding sources, as well as the 2023 projects and funding sources. And then a tab that also has the, the debt information. So these, the first page is the general obligation bonds from the general fund. This is represented by the debt service in the 040 debt service fund. The second page specifically are special obligation bonds through our TIF fund. This is the cost of the bonds for the Schulman Crossing Development the city did. And the revenues come in through the increased property tax values for those properties. And this is the schedule which finishes in 2035 for those, those bonds. And we are ahead of schedule, I think, Melinda presented on that in the past, that the revenues have been greater than anticipated. So there's a lot, high likelihood we'll be able to pay this off faster than the 2035 timeline. And then the last tab for the debt would be the utilities. So you have electric as well as water and wastewater bonds listed out. And those, those are paid from the debt service funds or the department sections under those utilities, department budgets. Any questions on any of the background material or supplemental information? If not, we'll jump into the, the packet for today. We start with fund, the 004, the TIF fund. This is primarily money in, money out. This is where our amounts we receive for any sort of CID or RHID, as well as the transient guest tax for the water park. We receive those distributions, whether it be from the county and property tax or from the state for the CIDs, the additional percent sales tax. And then we return, turn around and dispense that out to the developers or those, those entities that are intended to receive those funds. The exception being the tax distribution Garden City is the revenues for those property taxes for that Schulman Crossing. And then the, there's a expense interest on bonds and principal on bonds, 6507 and 6510, which are paying off that debt schedule that we, we just reviewed. Other than that, this is primarily matches exactly what the revenues are, are the exact expenses for each of those GLs. There are a couple of new ones you'll notice, the Notting Hill, North Borough and Milestone are new additions. So any new RHID that comes across or any new CID will have GC Plaza showing up soon on this as well. Those will be added so that we can track and, and carry on the same protocol. Those are a little tougher to budget and an expected revenue expense because we don't really know what those property tax values are going to be. Next is the 005 Capital Improvement Reserve. This is really held over, funds from the general fund typically are transferred if something that they intended to be spent upon are not able to be completed by the end of a calendar year. Those funds can be held here to accomplish that purpose. There are also some revenues. The rebate purchase card is the amount we get from commerce and we've intend, tagged that to be used for public art projects. There's fees for park reservations, some of the zoo programming, as well as donations are received as revenues in this fund. The 2022 revised is, the budget amount will be the full balance of this fund every year is allocated into those budgets. So any, any of the GLs that had a balance from the prior year, that same expected budget line stays the same unless there's any other transfers in or other revenue sources identified in this fund, then that budget allocation might increase. Otherwise, it's going to be the same year over year. So some of the larger ones you'll see, we have the cemetery improvement is funds being held for the singing tower that was meant to be expensed in 2021. That's been held over. There are the Human Resource Advisory Board, every year that those funds aren't spent out of their budget are held so that there are programs that can be done by the, totally spacing on it.
Cultural Relations Board.
They've done scholarships for different cultural events and, and they use these funds to, to be able to produce that. There's also funding for the, some equipment for the police department, the parks. There were multiple projects identified that weren't able to be completely finished and expensed in 2021. One was the Grimsley Lighting Project. One was the Clint Lightner Turf. So some of those expenses from 2021 were rolled and they'll be expensed out of this GL here. So that's a larger line than, than normal for those new equipment parks. You also have some money left over from the Tiger Grant. There's aquatic supplies that is building up in case there's a, a large expense that comes out of the pool that we weren't anticipating, we can build up some revenue here to be able to cover those costs, as well as construction for Pioneer Pathway down the road, some lighting and other improvements upon that. There's some funding remaining here for that. There's also in the transfer section, there was, when the aquatics budget was consolidated with the rec, some of the funding from what was anticipated to be budgeted in the, in that calendar year was saved in this fund to be able to offset the debt service of the, the pool project. And there's also a transfer this year to the, the PSN Fund or the Project Safe Neighborhood. I'll review that one here in a minute and I'll kind of dive into what that transfer's covering. Any questions on Capital Improvement Reserve? All right, Fund 006 is our development loan fund, CD loan. This is for home improvements, insulation, windows, storm doors. This hasn't been utilized, utilized very much lately, but there's up to about $1,500 per loan is a 0% interest for five years that citizens are able to apply for if they wish to make improvements from a specified list of those insulation and such items. So this is just carrying the balance forward over, over the next couple of years with an anticipation of if we do end up with those loans coming, that people are requesting, we can, we can dispense those out. Fund 007 is a cemetery endowment. There is 300,000 additional revenue this year that is going to be a portion of our allocation from the American Rescue Plan Fund. from the American Rescue Plan funds, and that's going towards the cemetery expansion project. There's also the expense there for 350,000 for the cemetery expansion improvement is the expansion, as well as the singing tower and any other funds necessary would come from that 005 allocation that they held over from last year. Fund 008 is the community trust reserve. This is used for different projects. Typically, a project is expensed and then reimbursed from some other fund. Right now, ongoing is the municipal court and evidence building. As they wrap that project up, that's where we had the internal financing of the two and a half million that the PD is paying back over the next few years. There's also, right now, the farmland road project is being expensed out of this fund, and then we anticipate revenue reimbursements from KDOT Economic Development and the county for portions of that project. So those revenues are listed above, and then the expense for that project cost for farmland total is down below. The city has a portion of that project that will be expensing that won't come out of this fund, it's gonna come from our 032 Special Trafficway Fund. For Fund 009, Project Safe Neighborhood, this is a grant through the police department. Last year and the year prior, there was a negative balance, well, last year and this year, there was a negative balance to this fund that was brought to our attention by the auditors that needed to be addressed. These grants, sometimes you have to expense the money and then get a reimbursement, and so it's a simple way to draw down a fund and spend money you don't necessarily have because you anticipate it's going to be reimbursed. Due to changing hands and some grant restrictions, there were funds that were expensed that aren't actually going to be reimbursed, and so that's where that negative balance to start the year has come from. To recoup that, to fix the problem, we're transferring 120,000 that was included in the police department equipment from the 005. We've lowered their, we've taken 120,000 from what their balance would have been for their projects, and they're allocating it to this fund to cover the difference of what was expensed that won't be reimbursed, as well as to include a portion that will pad the fund so that as we expense future costs, there will be a fund balance to draw down against and then be reimbursed, so we don't end up with that negative zero, negative number again. And then when this grant is completed, any remaining funds from that 120,000 will be put back into the capital improvement reserve and the police department line. So this going forward should be, have a positive balance and shouldn't be a red flag for the auditors. But this covers costs for the police department each year, kind of depends on what they're going to cover, but the idea is that the 39,420 revenue will cover exactly the 39,420 in expenses we anticipate in this coming year. For Fund 10, as well as Fund 11, these are, Fund 010 is DEA forfeiture, it's the federal forfeiture dollars we receive, where Fund 11 is drug enforcement, is local forfeiture funds. We anticipate both of these are going to diminish. There's not been much activity with forfeiture, and due to some legislation and different changes in practice, it's not anticipated that there's going to be a lot of activity going forward in these funds. So it's mostly the budgets you'll see are expensing the dollars that are there for the approved purchases, the equipment, other items. This has been used in the past for canines or for special police equipment. So the revenues are not anticipated to be very high going forward, so those will be expensed down, and if we receive more, then we can budget the following year for those, but going forward, we don't anticipate that'll be much. For Fund 12, the HITA grant, this is a, city has a share they put forth from the police department budget, and then we have a federal grant received to help fund the investigation. So this pays for a detective's salary as well as benefits necessary, and so you'll see our revenues are the city's portion and then the grant itself covering that, the cost of that detective. And we anticipate this, this will keep going, HITA is one we anticipate will continue. Fund 015, Enhanced Wireless 911 Funds, these are from the telephone franchise that are restricted to the purposes listed for enhanced wireless. The balance of this fund has been increasing because there are a very limited amount of things we can expense and use these funds for. You will see that there's contracts, maintenance contracts, the repair and equipment for dispatches including there, as well as training and travel. We do anticipate coming in the next year or two, mobile command units, so that if dispatch, if something ever happened at the law enforcement center, we'd have a dispatch center we could have remotely, and we anticipate we'll be able to use some of these funds, that cash balance on that project, so that'll be a good use of those funds. For the 018, FinUp Trust, this money we receive from FinUp every year. We submit requests for FinUp Park as well as the FinUp Center at the zoo. We have submitted a letter for this year, we haven't received notice yet of what we've been awarded, but typically we receive these funds and they go towards those specific projects, with some carryover for projects that take some years to accrue enough money to complete those. So there's a cash balance that you'll see there, but historically, we receive the money for those specific projects we've listed. And last year, we did receive additional revenue from the FinUp Trust for the splash pad, and so that's captured in the GEO bond fund. Fund 26 is revolving. This is used for our weed cutting and projects. Typically, it's expensed out and then reimbursed, so this covers when neighborhood development has issues that they need to go get something taken care of and then something cut down to be in compliance with the code and what we have. So there's been prior projects out of this fund as well, so if you look at the 2020 actuals, there's some that aren't budgeted going forward for a zoo project, but historically, it's mostly the weed cutting and such that come out of here. Fund 27 is risk management. There's money transferred in from the electric and the water departments to cover this fund, and these are typically for deductibles or costs that typically aren't going through our insurance that we need to pay for a damage or some liability rather than going through the insurance. This is a fund that we use to expedite costs and simplify when those are necessary. Fund 29 is the special alcohol and drug abuse. The revenue from this comes from the state liquor consumption tax. A third goes to this fund, a third goes to our special Parks and Recreation Fund, and a third goes to the general fund. The money in this fund is for our AFAC grants. There is cash balance going forward from allocations where we received, if you look back at this history, 2021 and 2020, we received more than was given out in those grants. And so that's where that cash balances come from. We could use that for similar projects for things designated towards that alcohol and drug abuse or prevention programs, but this is where that AFAC funding comes from that we do every year. And there's, the next sheet has the breakout of what 2022 first round, as well as the second round was distributed, and those were presented earlier in the year. Fund 030 is the special parks and recreation. Again, the main revenue here is that liquor consumption tax. There's also park land dedication. When new developments go in, there's a portion they have to pay towards park land dedication for future parks, as well as revenue from the tree loans that we established and give out. The expenses here, you'll notice going forward, the lease purchase golf is a payback for the golf carts that were purchased the end of 2021, they should get here this year. That was paid from the Recreation Reserve, and this fund is going to be reimbursing that reserve for those costs over the next five years at 25,000 a year. The total cost for the golf carts was 118,000, if I remember it. And then the, there's also the transfer to the golf course. Historically, it's been $40,000. It's going to, 60,000 for the next two years with the anticipation of the golf course improvement plan that they've been doing. They've been adding the value to the golf course. This is going to help fund some of that project going forward. Fund 032, Special Trafficway, this is used, the budget, or the presentation by Mike today talking about the road improvements, this is one of those funds that we use for those road projects that we have each year. The state highway funds we receive every year, and then if you look, that reimbursed fund exchange line is the money that Mike was talking about, we found out was just under 400,000 this year we'll be receiving for projects, as well as the state signal, signal funds that we receive. So the revenues for that go towards street operations, traffic improvements, as well as the signs and markings and the snow ops. And so the budget 211, the first page of this, you'll see the costs for those new equipment for vehicles, for the roads, the main expense being the material for the street repair, the chip ceiling, crack ceiling program comes out of that, and then any new equipment they are anticipating they'll need for trucks and things going forward. You'll see that for new equipment for streets, there's an anticipated increase in 2023 at 325,000 to replace some vehicles and some equipment.
So is the fuel infused in here somewhere in these different budgets? I was looking.
Yes, the fuel assumption is in all of this.
Is it utilities gas? It's the gas, oil, diesel.
Oh, I see, okay.
5525.
So it's what you, so budgeted 51, and then 20% is 55,000.
We've increased it over the 2021 actuals, so that 45,000.
Okay, so then it goes, okay, that's why I said increase, all right, thank you.
For the 212, street signs and markings, this takes care of the supplies and shop supplies, maintenance, traffic, things for the street signs and markings, and then 213, snow removals, some of the cost of the brine, the supplies that they use for the snow ops. Then Fund 035 is our workers' compensation fund. Each, in the assumptions, you see that each department transfers amounts for, per authorized employee. That comes in as the revenue for that 370,000 for this year for transfer city departments, and that covers the insurance work compensation premiums that we pay through CAMIT. There's also the safety committee, and their awards and supplies and initiatives are funded out of the commodities lines down on this budget as well. There are some claims that are paid specifically out of the work compensation fund above and beyond what CAMIT handles. In the Fund 036, the work compensation reserve was established back when the city was self-insured through workers' compensation, so this is something we've held on to. Those, there's claims that we pay directly from this each year. You can see the 2021 and 2020 actuals for some historical claims that are going to mean, we anticipate will continue to be paid from here. But we used this a couple years ago to fund the amount for the hearing aid purchase and reimbursement program for employees, and this money would be available if there was a year that we had increased premiums and work compensation. We could use the funds from the work compensation reserve to offset those costs. Fund 050 is community development. This has been used for the CERG Emergency Shelter Grant, so there are a few agencies in town that receive money to help housing, and so this goes towards them. This is handled through Neighborhood and Development Services Office. They monitor and distribute these funds when we receive them. So we initially, last year, anticipated 75,000. There was more distributed than we anticipated, so those numbers went up to the actuals of 120,000. We've increased our numbers this year anticipating that those funds are gonna be higher than the 75,000 initial budget as well. But this is more or less all that comes in is distributed out to those agencies, apart from the administrative fee is collected and maintained in the general fund revenue for the city's part in processing the grant. Fund 052 is the economic development loan. These are loans that are given out and managed. The cost last year are the expected revenues from these. We're in year two of a three-year loan term, and so the 2022 numbers, looking at the 2021 actual plus 2022 revised and the 2023 approved are the balances of the loans anticipated to be payback next year. So the amounts between 2022 and 2023 may fluctuate some, but the balance of the total value should remain the same. And budgeting these, we use the 2021 actual to get an idea. Some are ahead of schedule on payment, some are right on schedule, and there are a few that are behind. But these will all, we anticipate will be majorly paid back in 2023. There's also funding available. If more loans were requested and submitted, we could disperse out additional loans. And then Fund 053 is the project development fund. This has been used for a few different things. The downtown project is completed, and so those expenses are no more. The city capital project, we've had a few consultants that we've been using, and we're no longer using them, so those funds may be used for an economic development purpose that comes before the commission at a later date. These funds are more or less going to be available for that city capital purpose down the road. 058 is the housing. They pay a payment in lieu of taxes amount every year, and it's been building this cash balance in this fund for any unanticipated costs they might come across. Last year, they were looking at redoing their parking lot, they thought they might have to use some of these funds for that project, but they were able to budget that in their yearly budget, so they didn't end up needing any of the money from this. So it's just gonna continue to build that account up in case of those emergency repairs or anything unanticipated that their budget can't really accommodate. And the last one for today is Fund 069, it's the utility deposit. This is where customers pay their utility deposit, we hold it. When it's credited back, they, it's then transferred and put towards the electric or water costs that their account has accrued. I will say there's, the numbers here are skewed a little. 2020 actual you see is 276,000 for the contractual customer account, and it's only 68,000 in 2021. It was brought to our attention by the auditors that there was a transaction we were supposed to do at the end of the year to disperse out the amounts that had been credited for utility accounts to the electric and water, and that didn't occur, and so it's going to be in our journal entry corrections that they supply us, but we haven't done that until we get that list from them. So that will actually be, there's 221,000 that will be debited to that GL, the expense, so it'll be more like 280,000 on par for last year, and 147,000 revenues in electric and 73,000 on water will show up as revenues in 2021, which are not reflected right now in our 2021 actuals. So that correction is coming. Other than that, that's all I've got. Painless today, I don't know if the future ones will be quite as questionless and simple. Any questions I can help with today?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Jared. The, there's no more business items with, under new business, so we're at the point in the agenda where we've got the consent items. It looks like there's five of them, so the appropriate motion would be to approve items G1 through 5, unless you want to pull one of those off and talk about them separately.
I move to approve consent agenda items G1 through 5.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you, we're ready for commissioners' reports.
All right, Commissioner Oller.
I just wanted to point out that yesterday was lineman appreciation day, and, you know, the lineman, they work 24/7, whenever there's wind or, you know, there was a car accident this last weekend that required them to get out in the middle of the night, you know, to make those repairs, and I just thought that what you guys put up on social media was fantastic to recognize them, and so I just wanted to thank them for everything that they do that we don't see. And when they do their job, we don't pay attention, and we really should, because, you know, when my lights are on, I'm happy, and so, yeah. It was a very good pre-meeting. Thanks, Mike, for the update on the roads and just kind of what the plan is going forward. It really helps us. I know roads are also very important to people when you're driving down them and if they're bumpy and stuff, and so just knowing what the plan is and, you know, to kind of be able to help, help people and let them know what's going on, I appreciated that. I also wanted to congratulate Cliff Sonnenberg, but then also the zoo, 95 years, the zoo looks amazing. I hope that if I live to be 95, I look as good as the zoo, and it's really impressive, so that's really all I had.
All right, Commissioner Oller.
So I'm excited, I just, several proclamations, which I think are really exciting. Again, congratulations to the zoo, 95 years, and then all of the improvements that they're making all the time. There has been some major work done, and I know that they're continuing to do a lot of really great projects, and so Kristi and your staff, thank you so much for that, and it's a wonderful place to just to reflect and ponder and just spend a lot of time, even if you don't have kids, so. So the thing I think is really neat about Cliff Sonnenberg Day is 43 years is a milestone for anything, and then I love the fact that he starts at a place and then ends up really benefiting the whole time. And it is an honor to thank him. I know their family well, and graduated with his sister, and so it's really exciting the ways that, you know, really, the longevity of people in Garden City and the way that they stay on those jobs. I really enjoyed Bev's update, it's been quite a while. I do know several people who are, do foster animals. I don't know how they do it, because it's a, it would be a hard, it would be hard to let them go, no, not for me, because, you know, we already have enough pets. But I really appreciated the people who do that, and then I think that some of the names of their upcoming events, very, very clever. I want to say thank you for the cleanup. I mean, I know that it got behind a little bit, but with the wind and everything else, I know there's been lots of stuff in lots of other places that anticipated, but I just want to say thank you to the city crew and for their willingness to continue to get out there and really pick up, pick up, and make our city beautiful, pick up the trash and clean up our city. The last thing I knew is Garden Rapids is coming up. I saw that they are hiring for lots of people, lots of positions, so if you know young or older people who are interested in working at Garden Rapids, it's a great place. place, it's a great facility. This is year number two, um, and I know that they've done a lot of, um, they've done a lot of anticipation. There's even been a lot of work done for the second year, that a lot of us, we didn't get to see last year just because of, you know, everything that took place, but I'm excited about, um, the way that they are, um, way that, that this second year is really looking, and I'm so grateful to be a part of Garden City, so, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Sessna?
Um, kind of echo what the other commissioners said, a plethora of, uh, proclamations today, um, just highlighting the great staff and the community that we have. Um, it's, it's always nice to have, uh, to proclaim the great things that we do here in our community. A great pre-meeting, um, kind of stepping or giving us a schedule on how we'll move forward on keeping our roads, um, maintained and intact. I, I just want to congratulate our, our crews. I mean, they're fixing the entryways into a number of, of areas where the concrete's been broken up over the last number of years with the weather and everything, but, uh, I noticed that they were fixing those entryways where they've been, there's holes and everything, so, you know, they're, they're getting on top of that, but, uh, again, during the pre-meeting, a, a great way of showing us a schedule on how we're maintaining our, our streets in our community, or will be maintaining them over the next couple of years. Also wanted to mention that, I know the cleanup was, uh, delayed a couple of times, especially with the wind. Everybody walks out, and it's like, it's windy all the time anymore, but, um, and I noticed there's a couple of places that you, the crews are still working on getting and picking up, but it's a great service and, um, thank the staff for their hard work and dedication and diligence on, on, on this project, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Diz.
Yeah, so just, yeah, echo everybody, I don't want to repeat anything, but I, I do like, I do like when Nathan Heck came up and said, thanks to like, the awesome, uh, you know, how great Garden City is, and so thank you for coming up and sharing that. It is pretty, pretty awesome and neat to see the communities coming together in all nations and shapes and forms, and so that's, that's always good to hear about, so. Um, also like to just congratulate Derek on his first item today. Good job. Hey, he did a good, good job, so, and then congratulations on the new position for the childcare and early learning, um, so I know you, you do, be a great representative there, so thanks for stepping up. Yeah, I was, I was glad I ate because there was a lot of food being talked about with the barbecue for Cliff and, you know, the Marty, or, what is it? The Barker Vita Grill, Barker Vita Bill. Yeah, there's a lot of Cajun food there. I, yeah, I was hungry. Uh, but yeah, so thanks for sharing all that. What great events to be looking forward to coming up here in the, in the summer and, and things, so, um, police and electric, it's awesome to see. Social media, you guys are awesome, just putting those pictures and sharing that on Facebook, so good job on just capturing those moments of, you know, police and fire, the camaraderie and, you know, the silly photos and whatnot, so those are always awesome to, to look at and things, so. Uh, also prom this weekend, Saturday, so good luck with sending kids out. My, my son's going out, so hopefully, um, he's got everything ready for his prom date, and hopefully everything goes well for all those participants in prom this weekend, so other than that, don't blow away. See you next time.
All right, um, first like to say, um, thanks to all the churches that put together a community Easter celebrations. I was able to go to one, um, last week, and it was well-attended and, and very inclusive to all people, um, different ages and, and different backgrounds, and good to get people together for, for community celebrations that, um, have some religious, I mean, are religious celebration, but also it can be a cultural and a, and a city-based celebration. So, uh, thanks to all those, um, organizations that put together those, um, gatherings over the last couple of weeks. Um, and also make sure you mark your calendars, um, like I said, for Community Cultural Day. Sounds like it's going to be a really good event to get going in Garden City. Um, one of the things we do well is celebrate our, our cultures, um, so that will be a good addition. Also, like I said, um, Arbor Day, we're having that Arbor Day tree planting at Charles Stones at three fifteen, um, so if you have the ability to make it, everybody's invited to come to that. Uh, congratulations to Cliff on forty-three years. That is amazing. Um, that's, that's a very long tenure and a very impressive tenure, uh, and great, um, addition, uh, to our city staff and, and something that we can all, um, look to as, as a role model. Um, and also, uh, ninety-five years for Lee Richards and Zoo is very impressive, especially, um, how well that's been kept up. I'd like to reemphasize my disappointment for the base grant in a grant that, um, had the state had the ability to essentially give every county, uh, one million dollars. The third westernmost counties in Kansas got a total of less than half a million dollars. Um, like I, like I kind of alluded to before, um, we see that pattern happen often, um, so that is disappointing to see. And finally, uh, thanks for, uh, the Bev Glass and, and the Finney County Humane Society. Uh, we got our new dog last year, about a year ago, and, and they did a great job, um, with everything that they've done with pet adoptions and stuff like that. It's, um, if you don't want a pet, don't follow them on Facebook, because you will see so many cute pets, dogs, cats, chickens, things like that, so, um, they do a great job. So with that, I think we are done for today. Thank you.
Thank you.